Planning Board meeting for May 60, 2023 to order at 6:01 PM. Okay, first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without end, just as one. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? No, I don't see any, so we move on to the minutes for 5:23. You had received them in your packet last week. I don't know if you had a chance, not had a chance, to read them. If anybody did read them, do we have any additions, subtractions, corrections? And if you have them in front of you, do you want me to give you a minute to read them? Okay. If everybody's read them, looked at them, has no comments, I'll entertain any motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion as we accept them as printed.
Okay, very good. That's from Les. Second from, uh... Again, any comments? If not, all in favor of accepting them, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, so they are accepted unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, but we have three minutes before that, and we don't have anything else behind it. So I will do a little public comment here.
Yep, and I'll have, I'll send around the minutes if you don't mind. We can sign the minutes.
On the minute?
Yep.
I just want to comment that last night, the planning board had one item on the warrant. It was item 26, our signed bylaw. It was kicked, it was kicked back. It was defeated the last town meeting, or last annual town meeting. So this time, we had done some changes in it. And this time, we had a great presentation by Nicole Roberts on the signed bylaw and the changes that were made, and I have to give her kudos because if anything, I think that's what helped pass the signed bylaw compared to last year. So thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, she does deserve a round of applause.
Thank you.
Don't turn too red. Can I borrow your pen, Les? I like that one better. Here, you get minutes, too. Okay, now we still got a few more seconds. Great, now that we're not Zoom, I don't have to make all these announcements.
No, you don't.
Zoom meetings are a pain in the butt.
They are.
Okay. I see it as 6:05 on our big clock. So at that, uh... I will open the public hearing by reading the public notice. Notice is hereby given that the Winchandon Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, at 6:05 PM to consider the request for a storm water management permit and site plan approval for property identified as 256 Murdoch Ave., Winchandon Assessor's Map 2D2, Pascal 11, owned by Boswick Realty Trust, petitioner ZP Battery Devco LLC of 1 Mercantile Street, Suite 603 Worcester, MS 01606. Storm water management permit and site plan approval request for construction of a five-megawatt solar energy storage system with associated site improvements. Said property is located in the I Industrial District. The hearing will be held on the second floor auditorium of the Winchandon Town Hall, 106 Front Street. Information is available in the Winchandon Planning Board and Development Office. All interested persons should plan to attend. Alternative translation and accommodations are available by advance request, by contracting the planning agent, Development Department and Development Department at least three days in advance. So with the reading of the public hearing, I call this hearing open at approximately 6:06. Okay, very good. That's done. Would the applicants come up and give us an overview? As we had stated in regards to the last project, this project, or this hearing is open now, and you're giving us information, and we can have questions for you. But till conservation looks at this and your other site, you know, we hold it in reservation. But thank you for coming, and please introduce yourself.
Tom Corbett with Zero Point Developments, ZP Battery Devco, applicant. I've got Chris Anderson here with Hannigan.
Okay, and could you introduce yourself also, the gentleman with it?
Yep, Chris Anderson with Hannigan Engineering.
Okay, very good, and I'll just swear you. And do you swear to tell the truth, and the whole truth? So I'll be God, if you believe.
Yes.
Never know whether they're at that part. Okay, very good. So please, we have got some information on this type of project now because of the last hearing we had, but please go ahead on this project, since it is a different project than the last one.
Sure. All right, so this project is, as the chair has proved, as mentioned, is very similar to the previous but different in certain circumstances. This proposed project is located at the rear portion of what's number 256 Murdoch Ave. This is the property that contains the lumber processing facility. It's located behind the proposed building within the truck loading area that's utilized by the existing building itself. I'll wait a moment here for the plans to pull up.
For the computer to function.
If you could just speak into the mic a little bit, I don't have my hearing aids on.
No problem, sorry about that. One more page, there we go. So as you can see from the plan that's on the screen right now, the proposed facility is located on the rear portion of the property behind the existing building. This area is located within an area that is currently a mixture of scrub brush and opportunistic tree growth. There's a loop gravel road that encompasses that entire area, which is utilized for truck traffic and emergency vehicle traffic. So this is where the proposed facility is intended to be. As part of the proposed construction, there will be four concrete pads constructed to contain the actual battery storage systems, which Tom will go over in a moment. This entire area will be encompassed with a security fence with appropriate access gates. Due to the general nature of these sorts of projects, there's no need for domestic water supply or sewage connections. So the only real utility connections that are being performed on the site would be for the drainage system as well as the electrical components. Drainage on this site is accommodated by a single rain garden that's located on the northeast side of the actual battery storage site. This will capture the runoff, detain it, and provide mitigation for peak rates of runoff for the overall development. Once this is captured, it will be redirected towards an existing trunk line that runs along, parallel with the existing building. Currently, this existing drain line is undersized. As part of the overall development, we're going to increase the size of that drain line to accommodate the existing flows as well as proposed. In addition to that, we're also including a proprietary water quality unit to provide additional treatment of that area. Currently, there's nothing there. Water effectively gets into the drain line, and whatever does get to the wetland is unembated and untreated. So we're providing a little bit of an improvement as part of the overall storm water design of the facility. And this will then be directed towards the existing drainage outlet in the same location, but pulled back a little bit further from the wetland with appropriate velocity mitigation features to provide mitigation of the storm water again. That being said, I'll hand it over to Tom, and he can review some of the electrical components of the overall facility.
Sure. Nicole, you want to go one page up?
Yep.
So within the fenced area, we have the four bigger pads. So those will house the battery cabinets themselves. The battery cabinets go back to back. In, in front of those concrete pads there, there's some other equipment pads, some smaller stuff. There's an inverter transformer, as well as a re-closer on site. And then there's a controller that controls the whole system in general. The interconnection is there where the cursor is now. And it's gonna, we're gonna connect to the existing three-phase lines that come up Murdoch Ave. We're gonna extend it a little bit past where it ends now currently, where it connects to the building, just to get out to the backside and underground electric from there through the parking lot to the system itself. Each container has a dry pipe fitted with it as well for NFPA 855 compliance with the fire codes. I have, since our last meeting on our other project, I have talked with the chief about the projects in general as far as response goes and as far as things that they might encounter with a response. So we talked through the requirement for the water, the dry pipes being, NFPA 855 requires that the containers are sprinkled. So that feature has to be connected, has to be available for the fire department. So in a life safety situation, they may, they may use those dry pipes. Right now, guidance is to not apply water to our systems. And that can change from chemistry to chemistry depending on what kind of materials make up this lithium-ion battery. This, this chemistry is a lithium-ion phosphate, and the heat propagation is minimal, and that's why there's... The containers are able to be spaced close together through fire, large-scale fire testing. And through that large-scale fire testing, you kind of get guided on how to respond to a fire with a certain container. Things change manufacturer to manufacturer, but in this case, our consultants from Energy Safety Resource Group out in Ohio work hand-in-hand with the fire department in developing an individualized ERP for each site, an emergency response plan. And with that, they do on-the-ground training as well and kind of just go over any kind of site constraints or obstacles they may have on individual sites in order to better understand what their response needs to be and their setup needs to be. I can go through the container a little bit, as I did last time, if you'd like.
Just one quick question. You had mentioned a company before you move on to that, from Ohio. Training our fire department to deal with these batteries, and they'll come in and train them prior to you becoming operational. Is that what I understood there?
Correct, yeah. So Energy Safety Response Group, we work with them from the start of each project in developing an emergency response plan just as a draft form to submit to you all with an application, and as well as guidance for fire departments and any runoff concerns for conservation and stuff like that. So these guys at ESRG, they set fires to these systems on the daily basis, collect water runoff, collect air quality as well. And that's what really guides the response and guidance that comes out of their, their company. And ESRG is involved in pretty much any energy storage project you'll find throughout the country. They've been involved in many responses to incidents as well throughout the country, mainly Arizona, and a couple in Texas and California over the past five to 10 years. A lot of those have driven their guidance, have driven their research, have driven different ways of approaching suppressing these fires. So we had a big discussion, the chief and I, the other, last Wednesday. And I am working with ESRG right now on completing that guidance letter for them and getting that more site-specific guidance together for them, that initial phase of it, so that we hope to be worked through by our next meeting. So hopefully having a follow-up conversation with the chief prior to our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Now you can continue on. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. So I could just go through the container a little bit, because I think it's important to go through, just as... So this top picture here on the left is what the container looks like from the outside, obviously. So these containers go back to back. They are six feet wide, roughly six feet wide, eight feet high, and 30 feet long each. As I mentioned before, they go on the same concrete pad, back to back. They're separated with an air gap where they do meet on the sides. And then the next picture over to the right is the interior of the container. And you'll see the cabinet itself has nine doors in total. The nine, yeah. So there's, the first one on the left-hand side houses the cooling system. These systems are liquid-cooled versus air-cooled. These are purpose-built containers. They're NEMA-rated for outdoor use, rain, dust, snow, thermal, all that stuff. So these containers house the batteries themselves as well. So the first cabinet has the cooling system, and the next three have a, each have a rack of batteries. There's eight modules in each rack. And to the right of those, there are two DC converter cabinets as well to get the power to, back to the grid. And then on the last end of the container are three more racks of batteries. So the manufacturers through time have been evolving their containers and learning from past experiences as far as airspace inside the system, cooling of the system, how the batteries are placed in separation of power. A lot of those things have been driven through NFPA 855 developments and that, and new issues of that 855 in 2022, as well as all the guidance that comes from the UL 9540 certification for these batteries. So that's where the industry really started changing from a large container that's air-cooled, that has a lot of airspace, down to a smaller container, breaking up the power and making the container smaller with less airspace. Efficiencies in cooling, efficiencies in releasing air from the container in events of fires or shorts or smoldering plastic. So with that, the first door that has the AC, the air condition, the liquid cooling system, has a fire-rated wall to the right of it. And then it has three racks of batteries after that. And then on the, so then there's a firewall on each side of the batteries themselves. And then they're further separated from the DC converters for a distance about three feet, which is part of that NFPA separation of power. And so there's fire-rated walls on all four sides of each containment area that houses the batteries, which is just furthers to safety measures as far as potentials and spreading, irregardless of that this chemistry doesn't propagate like other chemistries. The containers are still built that way. They do use batteries, other batteries in these systems elsewhere. So that's where the design of the cabinet comes from, and it's really been a trickle-down of all those safety codes. This expanded picture here, that's a skeleton picture of the system, gives a description of, and you guys have all this stuff in your packet as well. That gives a depiction of the fire suppression plumbing. So there are eight sprinkler heads in each containment area for where the batteries are held. And that's plumbed outside of the container, and it hooks up to a pipe that's outside the fence line of the project for the fire department to potentially use. And, yeah, that's about, that's about it there for, as far as the containers.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Gould?
These are ion batteries, aren't they? Ion, yeah, okay. They produce heat, don't they? Okay. And they're vented.
They what?
Vented. Okay, these, these batteries are vented.
Are they vented?
Venting individually? No. The batteries don't fit. So the batteries are liquid-cooled?
Oh, okay. You can just change the...
I'm not sure if anybody on the committee is rather familiar with that area. Bros Pond and so on and so forth. It's been a headache to the town for the last hundred years for drainage. And I don't see anything here from Board of Public Works or anything such as this. So whether they're satisfied with it. I should also point out that, and the plans are good. The guys did a good job on the plans and so forth. But if you take a look at this voluminous hunk of plans, you take a look down here in the right-hand corner, not for construction, not for construction. You know, and gee, these plans might get approved, but the construction plans may not look the same. It's an old story, and it always has been. Lastly, ion batteries basically are the thing. They really produce a lot of electricity. They also blow up. And there was a chemical plant down in Boston here just a few weeks ago blew up because of ion, so they say. And the guy got killed. So, you know, you guys have done a good job and so forth, but I certainly have got to see some adjustments. I'd like to see the construction plans and so forth. And gee, I'd like to see elevations over there. You guys just left them off of everything. There's not an elevation on any one of your plans over there. I know what the elevation is. I got, I've got more USG maps than you have, you know, and they're pretty good. Even though they didn't do it by land, they did it by air. They did a pretty good job. But the difference basically on some of that property at 1,000, 1,000 feet and where Bros Pond is and the rest of it is quite a hunk, quite a hunk, like 20 feet.
Correct. So I'll, through the chair, I'll make a few comments. The note that's on front of the plan, that's just so that if anybody were to pick up the plan, it's not presumed that it is any way near approved. So typically, that's our disclaimer notice, so somebody doesn't pick it up and construct it. Relative to the elevations, it's, the plans are currently on presumed datum. If the board would like, it's on a specified datum. We can definitely make that modification. It's not a significant ask for us to modify that plan. So we can take that to consideration on the next go-around. I would also note that we did receive comment back from the peer-review engineers for Civil. So we are working through those and should have responses and updated plans ideally by the next meeting. So just as a disclaimer, some note for the board.
So you have Gene, which is Time Bonds, responses to the plans, and you, have you answered back to them yet?
Not yet, no. So those are currently in process.
Those are in process now, so, yeah, then, then we'll probably get those from you and then back and forth. But that's the way the process seems to work. We haven't seen Gene's responses yet. But we will be seeing. Why don't you give yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Now, any other questions? Les?
I'm gonna revert, revert back to this again. You said a fence. How high is the fence?
Typically, and we discussed this a little bit last time as well, our fence is typically seven feet tall. I did hear, I believe you guys have wanted eight feet, maybe, that came out of here at the last meeting. But our fence is seven feet.
It's, are you gonna have wire at the top?
No wire.
Why not?
We have not experienced ever any security issues on any of our sites, so that it's not a standard thing, and we're not opposed to satisfying anything that you guys might want to see.
I'm just saying this, you've got a lot of kids in that area. If you put this thing in there, that's gonna attract kids. I don't care.
It's an active, it's an active business right there. I don't think the kids play around on the loading dock, but I could be wrong.
The other, my other question is, where, where are some of these this size around here? I mean, the last time you were here, you discussed this, and you said Tublin, Ashburn, Ashburnham. That's a one-megawatt system.
Some of them are a couple, are two megawatts there. They might be one container, but they're two megawatts of power. But there are multiple solar fields plus batteries that have three. We have a site in Lancaster right on the hillside at the old golf place on Route 2. There's like three or four megawatts worth of energy storage on that site there. But like in a structure, in a system like that, that's designed exactly the same, we don't have any on the ground currently as far as this layout. But for technology-wise, the batteries are there in the Lancaster sites. There's sites in Westminster. I could get you a list of where some solar plus batteries are.
I'm just curious, because the ones you give us is all municipal departments. It's not a, like, national grid or anything like that, only?
Right, and I think, and I'll mention again, these sites, so we have 30 projects in with National Grid right now. And they're the first ones that the National Grid is having in their, in their distribution network as far as standalone only. So the state has just shifted from a solar plus battery incentive of development to just batteries. They're moving away from the large land clearing. We have a lot of infrastructure within this state right now for solar that needs battery storage. So you're seeing a movement towards just standalone batteries at this stage in the renewable energy industry. Throughout the years, I believe there's 24 megawatts here in Winchandon of solar with no battery storage. And you guys have, I forget how many people you have in town, but they probably use about a megawatt worth of power in town. So it's, the, the point is to store that energy and keep it here versus buying it from the larger utility grid at a higher cost. So the efficiencies and the goals of the clean peak energy standard through the Baker-Polito administration has been to utilize all the existing infrastructure that we have for renewable energy, being wind, solar, hydro, and being able to store that electricity in battery storage. And all these electric distribution companies are gonna be required to supply power from energy storage by the X amount over the next five years, 10 years.
So this power would come from anywhere. It doesn't necessarily be from town here. It could be from any, it could be from New Hampshire. It could be from Connecticut or whatever, anywhere.
I guess technically you can, I can't say no to that, because technically it could be. But, so the point of putting these locally in the local grid structure and not on the higher transmission side is to have it accessibly, accessibly here when we need it during a cold night in January. And there is more than enough power being produced here in town from solar to charge these batteries a couple times over.
Would that come back into the town, or does that just go everywhere?
The energy stays, mostly stays here. It can be called on from National Grid, and I'm sure the strategies will change over time as far as the DPU and the DOER. But right now, the DOER and the DPU are pushing along standalone energy storage and really making a move towards a microgrid situation versus what we have right now, which is very inefficient. And the point is to have a non-wires approach to infrastructure upgrades for that long-term resiliency of the electric grid.
Because if these batteries catch fire, if they do, they could burn for more than one day.
It would depend.
Could, could they let off black smoke and all that kind of stuff, like you, like you see it?
So fire events with these systems... So fire events with these systems, this specific chemistry, um, through large-scale testing, has shown that it does not ever engulf the whole container, and that's, that's partly due in part because of the chemistry itself, being lithium-ion phosphate, um, the way that these cells are made, they have a, a large surface area, they dissipate heat fast, so they, they have a hard time propagating inside the modules, um, and spreading that fire. So, looking at incidences throughout the country in the past, they haven't been specifically lithium-ion phosphate, except for a couple of them that never went to a fire event, um, but fire-wise, that, that, these systems are very safe as far as fires go. We've had energy storage here in the United States and, for fifteen years in the lithium-ion, ion, um, technology. And in Massachusetts, we've had battery containers here in Massachusetts since 2015, um, and now throughout the state, there's over five hundred megawatts of battery storage on the ground right now, operating and have been for years, um, and we don't, we don't see the fires coming up because we have battery management systems for these, to, to control things, um, and the battery management system is on a three-tier level from the cellular level to the module level and then to the container itself. So there's certain systems in place that track your voltage, they track the heat, um, they track overcurrents, they track state of charge and the state of health of the battery, um, and the state of health is really the bigger one because it, it tracks each individual battery cell, module, um, and, and how it operates, so it can predict a degrading situation where it calls us to maintenance that, um, as soon as it hits a certain threshold. So your first fire stop is your battery management system and the way that that's set up through different layers in order to be able to shut off certain parts of the system while things have to be monitored.
So as far as maintenance goes, how are you notified? Is this, uh, there's, you know, a system that tells you that this battery's down or it do, when do you come out and do any maintenance on these? Do you check them once a week or once a month or what?
So the system's monitored twenty-four-seven, um, from an off-site, uh, location. As far as the faults, I'll call it the fault system in, in the container, um, that would trigger a call to us, the system, at the time the system operator would be calling the, us to, uh, go out and service the equipment. Within the first year of the build, um, while it's operating within that first year, we do quite a few checkups, um, probably monthly checkups at that point, and probably daily for the first month or so, right? Um, and that's gonna change over time, but the long-term, uh, maintenance plan is about quarterly, once the system's up and running.
Again, I have one more. I'm sorry.
Go for it.
I'm sorry. I thank you for the noise, the decimal thing, I understand this, okay? Now, you're talking, this is gonna, uh, similar to city traffic or a vacuum cleaner, okay? Now, this thing is running at night, so at night, vacuum cleaner's gonna be a lot louder than during the day. I'm just looking at the neighborhood, that's...
This, I hear what you're saying, this system is so far back, there's no houses close enough to hear this, and, and that's as evidenced through the decibel chart.
I agree with this one here is, but...
Yeah.
I can't say anything about it, you know?
Yeah, definitely.
No one's talking about it.
For further conversation, yeah, right, um, but this one here, um, with the decibel rings, there, there's nothing in close proximity to this site. Uh, here, we're separated by, I think it's a roughly eighty or a hundred-foot wide railroad easement or land there before you get to the next industrial property next door.
Uh, Mr. Gould.
How close are you to the nearest occupied property?
Occupied property? Uh, residential?
Occupied property, occupied, whether it's industrial or, uh, you know, living.
Building or...
Yeah.
Building?
Building.
Um, I don't have that answer for you off the top of my head, but I gather it's well over a thousand feet.
Sure.
Maybe not to those ones there.
This one.
Maybe not to those ones there. That might be about six hundred feet to that.
There's quite a bit that's not on these plans.
Excuse me?
Quite a bit that's not on these plans.
Five hundred?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, I got a couple of people out here may have some questions, uh...
Yeah, after they're done and we're done with them, then the public...
Okay, that's fine. I don't wanna leave them out.
Okay, and also, uh, others. Uh, yeah, so it's about five hundred feet.
Yeah, five hundred feet to Brown Cor.
Now, okay, do you have anything, uh...
I have a question. So how far north have you had these set up? I'm just wondering what happens when it gets really cold in the winter, like ten, twenty below? What happens to the cooling system then?
Um, so as far as energy storage, the, they're using energy storage in Canada, so it, it, there's thermal testings that are done on these containers as well, part of the manufacturer side of things, um, so they actually do simulations for snowpack and all that stuff, and I have, um, documentation on thermal and what that looks like as well, but there, there's never really an issue at all with, um, the cold is actually good.
Okay. Uh, in regards to the noise, uh, as I see, uh, changes different here. Uh, what is, uh, considered a usual ambient noise level, uh, in a usual daytime in a country area? Do you have it like fifty-five decibels, sixty decibels, thirty-five for night?
I don't have that, I don't wanna give you bad information, um...
Okay.
But...
Have you or will you be doing a nose, noise study out there, actually in all your pro, projects, uh, for, to give us a, uh, pre-build noise level and a, then we can do a comparison afterwards?
We do in, in a lot of towns, it's usually an ask, um, so it, it's a pleasure of the board on that for sure, um, but we, we do that, we have done it in the past with other battery projects as well, and it, every solar project we've done, mainly because the inverters on the solar fields, um, but with these...
Yeah, we also have that within our soil bylaw that we can request that, I just wanted to mention that. Uh, we have the one here, I don't know how I'll apply this and apply to your other one, but, uh, I was just curious, because as I understand, the normal ambient, uh, day level is about fifty-five decibels.
I would say that's accurate, uh, fifty-five, I was gonna say fifty, but fifty-five sounds, the fifty to fifty-five is, would be my guess.
Okay, uh, well, I don't think I have any more questions in regards to that. If any, the board has any questions, I'll invite, uh, David, uh, and then Jesse or... Rocks, scissors, paper.
Oh, you guys wanna hand him your microphone, if you don't mind?
Uh, you have to come to the microphone.
Dave, you have to, yeah, so he's gonna, he's, if you wanna just get right here, Dave, that way you can be on camera.
We want John to be on there.
I know. If you don't mind signing in, please.
I'll do it after.
Okay.
Hi, I'm David Connor, I'm the Executive Director of the Winchandon Housing Authority, I also live in the town of Winchandon, and I'm here to talk about the residents that are in my housing development at Pearl Drive that will be impacted by this development. I'm all for clean energy, I have solar on my house, but at the end of the day, we have to make sure the systems we put in are safe for not just ourselves, but for our, the residents around us. And I have some big concerns about the thirty-four units that are probably not much more than a stone throw from the area you're working at, and as, uh, Lester Goodrich mentioned, there are a lot of children in that development. It's a one-to-four-bedroom housing development with thirty-four units. My biggest concern is, and I know fire suppression, you have a system in place and the fire department has a plan, but where's the smoke gonna go? And what is that gonna do to those families if there was a fire? Who's gonna be in charge of relocating them while the fire happened? If we all remember what happened in Ohio with that tanker car, right? The whole community had to be relocated. Winchandon can't handle that, and I don't think we could handle moving thirty-four families in an, you know, in an emergency. These are things that I think have to really be considered because I'm familiar with firefighting 'cause I did it for twenty-eight years in this community. When smoke gets into the woods, which is all around this area, the smoke stays low and it travels through the trees, and it could go over to these neighbors on School Street, but I know it could head over to Pearl Drive. We don't know what the winds do there normally and how that will react, but that's one of the biggest concerns we have, is one, safety of the children not being able to play in the area. I know that it's a industrial-zoned area and it's allowed in the zoning, but you've got a residential community a stone's throw away that is largely populated, and I think these are concerns, your board's asking some great ones, but more needs to be thought about and taken into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And I just wanna mention, we'd probably delve more into, but this is the project that's behind the factory, and at the next hearing, we'll be dealing with the project that's next to, uh, the housing, which is a bit of a different animal. Close, but...
Yeah, but it's still, the smoke's gonna travel.
It's still relevant, relevant.
Yes. I look forward to hearing more about it.
But it's good to get the concerns out now so you can answer them when the hearing does come up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we'd, uh, I guess we know which brewer.
Dave, we know where you work, we're stealing pens.
And introduce yourselves to the, uh, the viewing public.
This one.
Yeah, the, yeah, that one.
Rodney Barrow, three sixty-three School Street.
Thank you, Rodney.
Let me just finish signing in.
Okay, all right, so where is the factory on this drawing?
It is right here, right here.
Okay, so where's the rail bed?
Right here.
All right, so where's the pond?
In the back, right? Pond's in back.
Where? No. The pond behind the factory. There's a pond right behind the factory on the opposite side of the, um, rail bed. And on the other side of that pond, there's new houses going in. Those houses weren't reflected on the map you brought up a little while ago.
Yeah, they're, they're like, the houses we just did are five hundred and some feet from this pond.
Okay, so the prevailing winds in that area, because I'm fifty feet from the factory's property line, go from northwest to southeast. Any smoke, if there's a fire, or when there's a fire, 'cause eventually there will be, is going to go across the, um, the rail bed headed directly into town, it's gonna cross over, um, the housing development, uh, what do you call it? Project? Prodrive. Um, so it's right downtown. Um, that's one of my concerns. Two, obviously is the noise. Um, this is a very active area, um, like I said, I live right there. There's ATVs, there's walkers, there's dog walkers, there's hikers, there's bicycles up and down that driveway, going in and out of the rail bed all the time. This is not a remote place. Um, now, obviously, I got, I was at the Conservation Board and I didn't get a copy of this one, they gave me a copy of the one that's the other project, I guess? So, um, again, I didn't get a chance to see a site plan. Is there solar panels on this, or is this just batteries? 'Cause it says solar battery in the letter I got.
It's, it's energy storage, it's just energy storage and it's through the solar bylaw.
Okay, so there's no pa, panels, all right. So batteries eventually leak, they go bad. What's the plan to prevent leaching into the ground?
Um, so batteries, they're sealed, they'll, they never leak unless they're punctured or compressed. They do go bad in their usability as far as charge and discharge, um, as far as end of life for these batteries, we work with a recycler out of Rochester, New York, um, and they get fully recycled and back down to raw materials and making batteries.
Okay, so you actually have a recycling plan for these? All right, can you, can you zoom that in?
Yeah, I will.
Sorry. I'm just curious. So the, the green dot is where it is. Where on that lot is the, how far back is it?
It's gonna be right here, correct? Your solar battery storage is gonna be right here.
So you're gonna take the, so the trees you're cutting down are the ones that are kind of in that parking lot area?
It's that brush area, am I, is the mouse in the right spot?
That's surrounded by the, the dirt, okay.
The battery storage system is located with that little island of trees and brush that's within the loading area of the, uh, the same factory.
Okay, so where at, when you get to the end of that property, you're about, what, a hundred yards from there? Maybe, at most, maybe a hundred feet. Where the road cuts into the woods, there's a wetland right there. It's been there since I've had my, I bought my property in 2013, it's not on any of the town maps. I was told by the town clerk that we have no water on our land. Well, we do. Um, so you see that, that little gap? See, where it's bright yellow, then you get that little gap with, and then the next yellow line? Nope, just to the left. Nope, that one, yeah, that one. So that's my property line. So that corner of my property and the, that skinny part that belongs to the American Legion and going down probably parallel to the, the corner where it cuts back, um, south, that's all water. Um, and that flows into the, or feeds both ways, that feeds into the brook that runs down parallel to Murdoch Ave, and it feeds into the marshlands that head out to Robbins Road and cross under Route Twelve. So any leakage, seepage, or any other chemical issues going into the groundwater are gonna travel a long way. People around this areas have wells, not everybody's on town water, um, some use it just for gardening, some use it for their drinking water, okay? And like I said, you've, you, you, you weren't mentioning the pond even behind there. Granted, it will dry up in like August for two weeks, but it's generally there year-round. There's plenty of wildlife that's back there that uses these waterways, including migratory birds, and some of the flo, uh, the fauna or flora, plants, they're kinda borderline on whether they're protected or not, um, trillium, uh, lady slippers, um, you know, anybody, I, I don't know who's doing the, um, and I brought this up with Matt at the, on email this week, um, the inventory of animals, lizards, frogs, toads, et cetera, um, that are using that area, that may or may not be endangered or protected. Um, there's definitely eagles and hawks in the area, I know, I've lost some chickens to 'em, so they are eating the wildlife that lives there. Now, you're talking about noy, ambient noise being there all night long. Like I said, got the housing project right there, there's neighbors right on the other side of that, um, sounds weird, but there's, in the wintertime, October, after the parks close, we actually have a homeless population that goes out there, sets up for a few weeks until it gets too cold and they have to go into the shelters. This really, really is not a remote location. Um, you know, and on the larger picture, you know, I, obviously we're only meeting about this one plan, not the other one, which really is closer to the stream flowing into town, but, you know, we've got what, eight, nine solar fields in town already? Something like that, give or take, and it, plus, including the one that's being built done on Spring Street. I see a lot of solar going in, I don't see how it's benefiting the town. My electric bill hasn't come down, and I'm on the town consolidated electricity. It's gone up every year. It's gone up every year. You know, I see, you know, no offense, but you guys don't live here. The owner of this company doesn't live here. He's from Waltham. He called me. He wanted to buy my land so he could make this bigger. That being said, my land's posted. Your surveyors were on my land and they left markers. I pulled them all when I found them, but nobody knocked on the door, nobody asked my permission, nobody asked for access. That's really a poor way to start your relationship with your neighbors. So overall, if it was up to me, I'd put a moratorium on solar in this town, whether it's batteries, panels, unless it's going on somebody's house or business. That's where solar is effective. As even the environmentalists are saying, we can't solar and wind our way out of this. It's not gonna happen. You would have to literally cover all of New England to power the United States with solar panels. It's crazy. So getting back to the fire department, are they gonna be able to use the current equipment that they have? Or is the town gonna have to go out and buy new equipment, specialized equipment, to put out the fire when one of these catches? Are they gonna be able to just hook up the water from the truck and pump it in there? Is that gonna kill it? Or are they gonna have to use chemical suppressors to put the fires out?
Is there a question?
So if there's a fire, or when there's a fire, is the fire department going to have to have special equipment or chemical suppressors to pump into this to put it out? There was a Tesla that caught fire on the Pike last month, two months ago. It took them nine hours to put the fire out on a car. How long is it gonna take to put this out and how much water when we're having issues with wells running dry? We have to rebuild, spend, what, $10 or $20 million to rebuild the water line coming into town because we can't get enough water into town as it is? And if you gotta dump water on this battery for 10 hours or 20 hours, that, you know, who's gonna pay for that? That's gonna be all in our water bills, those of us who are on the town water. You know, eventually, it all comes back to us. So that being said, or is there special foams and chemical things that the fire department's gonna have to buy and invest in in order to put the fire out when one of these catches on fire? And who's paying for that?
Go right ahead. Very informal.
So fire response wise, there are no foams right now, guidances to not put water on these, so we're not, we're not anticipating a high usage of water or water getting into the ground. Just to circle back a little bit on another thing you said about leakage, seepage. Again, these batteries don't leak. There is a liquid coolant system that is involved with the containers. That is a closed loop, just like a car. So there is a catch pan on the bottom of each container that holds 243% of the 43 gallons that, of coolant that are in each container. So that if there was, excuse me, if there was a leak from the coolant aspect, say a hose blew or something, then it would be caught in the pan of the container and would not leave the container. So the fire part of it, as far as response right now, is to let the energy burn out of the cell that's on fire as it's not propagating to the next module and it's not propagating to the next container. And, and again, this, this differs from manufacturer to manufacturer. This is guided through UL 9540. This is guided through NFPA 855. These systems have to be certified through UL 9540 as a whole system. The system manufacturer has to come out here upon mechanical completion and certify the system, otherwise it cannot go operational. So there's, there's a lot of codes and there's, there's probably a dozen UL codes as well as NFPA codes that this has to meet in order through the building code as well. That's where this all comes into play upon our building permit. So there's plenty of application information as far as our compliance with that. I believe I gave you a compliance guide, but I can double check and get you the guide that specifically spells out how we comply and what the code is. So I'll look back to see if I supplied that with the initial application. And if I hadn't, I'll get that to you soon, so you'll have it prior to the next hearing.
Now, if these, as one of his questions was that, as if one of these does catch fire, is there any specialized equipment needed?
Uh, no, these fires are fought, quote unquote fought, with just normal practices. Hoses mainly, surrounding exposures, protecting surrounding exposures mainly is, is the case here, where you're producing essentially rain runoff water. You're not infiltrating the battery cabinet, you're not ever putting water directly on the battery. A lot of the things that you see on TV about putting tens of thousands of gallons on these batteries is the simple fact that they're putting water on it. When you put water on it, you're trying to cool it, but then if you let it go and you, and it reignites because that temperature wasn't brought down far enough or long enough, then you have a re-ignition and now you're using more water. So the deterrence from the water is to let the energy burn out of the system and not create more electrical shorts through your process of firefighting. And that's guided through professionals in the field, consultants. We've had projects peer reviewed by big, large companies that have come back with compliance.
Do you have any other questions?
Yep. So when it catches fire, how long does it burn?
That would be situational. But if it was a module, so I'm gonna put it in, in terms of how Energy Safety Response Group, just because it's firsthand knowledge of how they do their burns. When they apply no water, it's depending on the module, depending on the chemistry again, they're, they're not seeing more than a two-hour burn of energy to get that out. Now, that burn isn't a billowing black smoke the entire time. The initial part of this, yeah, sure, it's just like any old house fire, there's a ton of plastic. Any house fire creates toxic fumes as well. Any, any fire in general by definition is toxic fumes. So there, there are things that burn, there's applications here that it's better to let it burn than to apply water because of re-ignition and, and yes, contaminants to the ground if you're directly putting water onto these certain chemistries. This one is very environmental friendly in that term, but other chemistries of batteries are not. So they have heavy metals. This does not have heavy metals in it.
All right, because, so I find it hard to believe it goes on two hours.
Do you have any questions, though? I know.
Again, it's situational.
All right.
I can't predict what it, what a fire would do. We can only go off of, of an actual staged process that we have.
All right.
Mr. Gould, you...
Let's get back to the fire department. I hear you say that we're gonna put the fire out with water?
No water.
No water?
No water.
Yeah, because electricity and water don't mix. So, so they're gonna use foam?
No foam.
No foam?
We let the energy burn out. You let these...
Suppose there's an explosion and there's a big fire?
There's, so for one, these batteries don't explode. Batteries don't explode by themselves without being punctured.
They certainly do. You know better than that.
No batteries...
Batteries explode basically because batteries basically are energy. And when it gets hot, energy goes up.
So the battery modules themselves won't explode unless they're punctured. And even in that fact, it's, it's not an explosion of that sense. In historic events of these systems, in Chandler, Arizona, and Surprise, Arizona, as you Google search, those, those, the Surprise, Arizona in 2019, that explosion was not a battery exploding, it's a buildup of gases inside the airspace inside that container, which is why the manufacturers have gone to less airspace, cooling systems that are different to allow for that. And there's gas sensors in this, in each container as well with the exhaust vent that comes on and gets gases out. So it would never meet that lower limit. And we're never opening the doors on the containers when it's on fire.
Well, then, if that's the case, what happened with this explosion down in Boston? Or, for example, why is the city of New York trying to outlaw all of these ion batteries?
I can't answer that question as far as what happened on the, at the other site.
Well, okay, I realize that's putting you on the spot, but the gentleman has, has a darn good, darn good point. And I haven't seen anything from the fire chief either, not a thing. We don't have anything from him? Well, we need to light, I shouldn't say light a fire underneath the fire chief, but I think it's about time, basically, we got him in here and find out just exactly what happens and so on and so forth. I see no reason, basically, why we should give him a free ticket. If something explodes up there, you're gonna have a fire, they sure as hell are gonna have to put it out with something.
So Mr. Gould, Chief Smith does not have a free ticket. They have been in communication and they are working on a plan. And then once that plan is formulated, then I'm sure we will get it in writing from your company in terms of what the conclusion was to your meetings and how you proposed dealing with a fire, a potential fire, and the ways to fight it.
Well, the point is, you know, there's a lot of information we don't have. You know, for example, I understand basically that you people don't even have a DEP number. How in hell could you go before the Conservation Commission without a DEP number?
They didn't.
They did not go before the Conservation Commission. The hearing was opened and continued. Conservation does not hear hearings unless there's a DEP.
They didn't go to Conservation?
They went to Conservation on the 11th. The hearing was opened and continued.
Till the 8th of June.
Yeah, until the 8th, assuming, assuming a DEP number is issued. In the event that it's not, it'll, this will keep getting continued until it can be heard by Conservation. And the reason for that is because by issuing a DEP number, the DEP has a, has a chance to review the case and to comment. So if DEP finds that there may be endangered species out there, they will comment as such and they will make them go a step further and they will make them do an endangered species evaluation, complete with a report from the state to identify anything. But the reason why Conservation doesn't hear is because DEP has not had a chance to comment because there's no number issued yet, so they have not reviewed the case.
Well, what are we doing in here with this plan, basically, if they haven't taken care of all the preliminaries?
We are gathering information so we can be educated on what is going on. So if we have any further questions, as the Conservation Commission hearings are heard and as planning board hearings are heard, Chris has the opportunity to go back and to give us more information as we are requiring it. And that's why we're keeping the hearings open until the whole process can take place, both with the fire chief, Conservation, and planning.
Respectfully, fellow members, I do not agree.
Well, the hearing was scheduled, so you have to open the hearing. We could have, wait, we could have opened it and we could have just continued it, but we ask these gentlemen to come here to just give us an overview of what's going on.
I have it if you don't have the correct information.
Well, you have to, I'm sorry, I'm not arguing with you, Bert. Okay, yes.
So on another note too, if I may, Ty and Bond has had a chance to comment. The comments were sent back to Hannigan Engineering, so Hannigan can have an opportunity to comment. And then once we get it back from Hannigan, it goes back to Ty and Bond. I will forward all the comments. I just feel like if, with the, with the back and forth, I feel like that's a lot of confusion. And let Hannigan have an opportunity to comment to Gene and then have Gene respond so we can see how Ty and Bond feels.
Well, I applaud you for coming in and speaking your piece.
Can I ask a question on the other?
Sure, go ahead, Rodney.
The other plan, because I didn't get a notice on the other plan.
The other plan, we really can't answer questions on that.
It's not relevant, this is not a hearing.
When's that?
It's a hearing for just this plan.
When's that meeting?
That meeting will be the same time.
June 20th.
That meeting will actually be after CONSCOM hears this. So your best chance to comment on this is with CONSCOM, or your next chance is with the Conservation Commission. Because of a lot of this deals with the water and the whole nine yards, it's under CONSCOM purview.
All right, so that would be, yeah, that's probably more appropriate for that.
So Conservation's hearing pending, there's a DEP number, which you're welcome to call my office to see if there's a DEP number issued, is June 8th.
Yeah.
So, so assuming that CONSCOM has the DEP number, the next planning board hearing for, we can have both 0 Murdoch Ave and 256 Murdoch Ave. Since they've been opened and both continue to June 20th, we can hear both hearings on that day.
June 20th?
June 20th, yeah, 6 o'clock.
If CONSCOM has dealt with it.
Right, if it's been...
Not, we'll continue it.
Yeah, and if not, we'll continue it to the next available meeting, which is going to be mid-July due to the 4th of July holiday falling on a Tuesday. So it would be July, July 18th. And again, you can always call or email me if you have any questions whatsoever. I'm always available.
Yeah, sorry, Nicole, right?
Yes, that's me.
So I, Matt, I'm good thing Matt gave me his, his email. I couldn't find it on Winchton's website. Can I get your email?
Yep, my email is N Roberts. Yeah, N as in Nicole.
Yep.
Roberts with an S.
Roberts.
Yeah. At winchton-dashma.gov. And I can, once you email me, I'll CC Matt and all of our communication as well.
Sure, that'd be great. Now, do you have a PDF of these? Because the drawings I got from him, their PDFs didn't have the site plan.
So actually, you can go back to the meeting calendars as well. I'll show you where I load all the information in the event that people wanna work from home. So we're on the main page of the Town of Winchton webpage. Go into calendar.
Yep.
Today's the 16th.
Okay.
Click on the date, scroll down to the planning board meeting and public hearing.
Okay.
And then see everything all up here? That's everything we're looking at tonight.
Okay.
And I did that for both the last hearing and this hearing. And it's also all loaded for CONSCOM too. All of, Matt's entire agenda is loaded on his too. So if you always go to the calendar, always go to the date, you will see everything loaded so you can review it ahead of time. Or if you're watching from home. But all of the plans are right there, all of the, the letters, the abutters, everything is there. Everything that we were provided from Hannigan is all loaded up on that section.
Okay.
Yep. And like I said, any questions, just feel free to call or email.
Okay.
Okay.
You got anything?
I can tell you who it is.
I'm good.
What is your name again?
Rodney.
R O D N E Y.
Rodney, what's your last name?
Brewer, B R E W E R.
Rodney Brewer. Rodney Brewer. Thank you.
Yep.
363 School.
Yeah, he was in the dialing box.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Do we have any other questions from any of the board members or any other information you wanna give at this time?
I think we're good. I think we'd just like to ask to continue to the next hearing date.
Until the 20th.
Yeah.
Yes. Nobody else?
I have one question.
Okay, very good.
So you said that the ones that are close to here are a lot smaller, so would there be any chance of making these smaller? Like why is 110 and 15 when the closest you said was three, or I might be wrong?
So the ones that are smaller, I think, I believe you're talking about maybe the municipality ones that I mentioned last time, like Templeton and Ashburnham. They, they utilize those with their substation. They, they went through a grant process, the ACE's grant process in the state of Mass. And the ACE's grant process was a pilot program essentially for this stuff that's going on right now, where they had to prove the proof of concept before they could bring this big picture together. So the municipalities were used to put batteries with their substations to, one, connect all their solar in town to it and, and be able to peak shave. But those systems were typically from 1 megawatt to, I think the largest one was like a 3.5 megawatt in size through that grant process. And if we kind of, I know it's not too relevant, but the solar incentive programs, we saw that go from 500 kilowatt systems to 1,000 kilowatt systems to 5,000 kilowatt systems. It's essentially the phases that we're in right now with this development of the energy resources. So we started with the ACE's grants as pretty much our SREC 1, quote unquote, and now we're in our... And now we're in our SREC 2 here with getting into the development, the implementation of standalone storage. So this is, it's kind of the phases that the state puts through, not really necessarily from a developer's standpoint.
And did you look at any other areas in town?
Uh, yeah, several other areas. I, I got in my pickup truck in April 2020 and I drove around the state and I've got 70 potential projects throughout the state. So there's, we have projects everywhere. I've got about 10 of them permitted already so far.
Now you had mentioned there were malfunctioned wildfires in Surprise, Arizona and Chamber.
Ch, so Chandler, Arizona?
Oh, in Chandler.
They don't, they're a lot different scenarios than what we're looking at here. And it's hard to see that from not being in the sector, I guess. But there are differences and the implications that they had from those differences are kind of what drove the results of what happened there. And we could talk through that if you wanted to at some point in time, whether now or, or in the future. But there are major differences between how the system was operated as far as being inside a building and, and having airspace, ability to be habitable, a habitable building. These are not habitable containers, the industry is moving away from them. So there's, there's a lot of differences, so.
A lot of differences, but those are.
It's hard to look at like fire situations from the past and apply it to like even technology that we've had for a couple of years now.
In that same vein, is there any malfunction, fire for lack of a better word, of anything within the past few years of these units that you know about?
Uh, not that I know of. Well, I shouldn't say that, anywhere. So the Chandler, Arizona, I believe was 20, early 2022 possibly. And that was.
Is it this type of unit?
No, not exactly, no. No, different manufacturer. So there, there was one out at the Moss Landing as well, different manufacturer in California, Moss Landing, M O S S Landing. It's an old power plant there. They've got effectively 800 megawatts worth of these batteries out there now. There's three or four projects right next to them. And what happened there was, it was, it started, it was just an electrical short. It never progressed to a fire. But the system did as what it was supposed to do and it wasn't even online more than 12 hours, I don't think. So the system didn't even have a time to learn itself. But the system did what it was supposed to do, it shut it off and it prevented the fire.
So I mean, just so we have some reference to go out on the internet and.
Definitely, yeah, there's just, there are some major differences, but happy to have the conversation.
Okay, one of these, should be able to check that out. Any questions from anybody else?
Who's the manufacturer of the batteries?
No, you just need to come forward.
You have to come up to the, because everybody at home wants to see you, Rodney.
Yeah. Just real quick, who's the manufacturer of these batteries?
The batter, the, the system? So I'll give you both. So the, the system itself, the container is made by Sungrow Manufacturing. And the batteries are sourced from either 1 BYD or 2 CATL.
CATL, okay.
They're the two largest battery manufacturers in the world.
So they're made where?
They're made in China, just like every other lithium ion battery right now. This is not a Tesla system.
Okay, very good. Not hearing anything. I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to June 20th at 6:00.
PM, 6:05.
6:05, what is the other one put at?
6:05, we're, they're all 6:05.
6:05, we'll set them up by the same time.
Yes, 6:05.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motions.
Okay, Mr. Gould, second by Mr. Armenta. Okay, any other comments before I call the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, and I think that's humanity, continue the hearing. Hopefully you get your DPW.
DEP, yep.
Such a number.
It's, it's those three letters.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys.
We'll see on the 20th, God willing. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, second?
I'll second it.
Second by last, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.